Just clear. Yeah, so do you.
Welcome to the February 28th City of Oldsmar Council Work Session on Golf Carts, Council Member Expenses, and Volunteering. It is 6:00 PM. I am calling this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us. Our first item on the agenda is our invocation and our pledge allegiance will be led by our city attorney, Tom Trask.
Dear Father in heaven, give us the power to clearly discern right from wrong, allow our words and actions to be governed thereby and by the laws of this land. We ask for your inspiration to strive in our endeavors to serve the public. We also ask that you direct us so that above all things we will discharge our duties for the benefit of the people we serve. Thus we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom. Welcome, everyone. Next item on our agenda is the Oldsmare Public Open Forum. I don't think there's anybody here, so I'm going to close the Oldsmare Public Open Forum. And our next item on the agenda is Item One is Review the Golf Cart Ordinance. The Sheriff's Department just gave us this little golf cart low-speed vehicle chart for us, and we're going to open this up to discussion. Does anybody wish to make any changes or make any updates to the current? Any changes? Anybody have any open discussion? Want to go first, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I, this came back to us. Tom brought the ordinance to us. There were some challenges to that ordinance, or some concerns, I should say, not challenges. And we were trying to figure out a way to make sure if within the bounds of state law when we're writing this ordinance, but also, you know, what do we want to do? Do we want to open this up to 14-year-olds per state law? Do we want to not? Do we want to keep it? I think we just got to have a discussion about what do we want. But the challenge that I had when I started going through this was, we really don't have golf carts, right? We have golf carts. There are some golf carts. There are some identified as low-speed vehicles, as the sheriff has presented this information today. And really, what do we want the future of Oldsmar to have inside of it? For instance, Safety Harbor didn't allow golf carts, but low-speed vehicles, which is what you see throughout Safety Harbor, they're all tagged, titled, insured, everything else. I don't know where we want to go. I'm not trying to get rid of golf carts. I just want to make sure that we're putting this in the right direction that we don't have to revisit this for the 12, 10 years. Just get it done.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Councilor Knapp?
Well, the one thing that I believe, and he's not here to speak, and I'm not going to try to put words in his mouth, but Councilmember Graber had identified with some of the language about, as it relates to golf carts and trying to make any changes based on how it's currently written. And the way our ordinance reads right now, and it might just be semantics or how you look at whether it's if you say something is lawful versus if it's unlawful, but the one part in the state statute where it says any more, greater restrictive ordinances can only apply to unlicensed drivers. And how our ordinance reads essentially right now that it's okay if you are a person holding a valid license, but we are then being more restrictive of where that operation can take place. But then kind of at the earlier part of that, it says it can be operated on any road that the municipality designates, right? So we're designated essentially where we can't use it. So I don't know if there's any issues around that as far as designated where it can be done versus where it can't. And again, it's just like, you look at it from what's allowed, what's a pro versus a con, you know, antonyms of each other. So I, I remember where some of the discussion went before as far as trying to do what we felt would be the safest option as it relates to golf carts, because I think it's pretty cut and dry as it relates to low-speed vehicles and what the restrictions are there, which I think are more stringent from a insurance perspective, licensing perspective, all that. I think the risk is where golf cart usage is permitted. So I don't know if there's like, if we need to adjust the language of our ordinance to be where it's calling out unlicensed drivers versus licensed, or you can just infer that if you're saying it's allowed for licensed drivers XYZ versus unlicensed, you know, you just assume that if it's only saying it's for license, then obviously it doesn't apply to unlicensed drivers. So that, that's where I would kind of prefer to potentially get some input from our city attorney, what his thoughts are based on prior discussions as well as where the ordinance currently stands as it relates to how our state statutes read. So that's my discussion point. I don't know if we want to defer to him now, or if Councilmember Gannon would like to share some thoughts.
Councilor Gannon, go.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor and Councilmember Knapp have essentially covered the discussion items. Vice Mayor brought up the low-speed vehicle versus golf cart. I was curious as to our city attorney's opinion as to letting state law govern the use of low-speed vehicles in Oldsmar and just keeping golf carts in our ordinances as opposed to trying to do both. I don't know the pros and cons one way or the other. Then, as Councilmember Knapp mentioned, the issue of where you can't drive them versus where you can, and the age restriction, and it doesn't necessarily bear repeating, but the whole golf cart may not be operated on public roads or streets by any person under the age of 14 is what the statute says. And then our code says be in possession of a valid driver's license. So I just wanted to get some clarity. I know residents were looking for clarity. So I'm open to discussion about all these, all these things that we've brought up.
Thank you all for all that discussion. All I can say is, I don't want to lose golf carts in the City of Oldsmar. I know a lot of residents have been questioning me on this, and they all want to keep them. I agree with Councilwoman Knapp about where they can drive. I get crazy texts that people are crossing Tampa Road and they want me to fix that, and I'm explaining to them that's a state road. It's never going to be allowed.
For a golf cart.
For a golf cart. Yeah. So, but yeah, I think we should, Tom, if you would like to shed some light on our current ordinance, and if you recommend we should change anything or what you, what you would recommend to the council, I would, I would appreciate that.
Sure. First of all, this is on, I think it's on. The ordinance that we have doesn't regulate low-speed vehicles. It only regulates golf carts. And we know that because in Section 66-100, it defines a golf cart, and that defines a golf cart based upon what the state statute is. And the state statute says, "A golf cart means a motor vehicle that is designed and manufactured for operation on a golf course for sporting or recreational purposes, recreational purposes, and that is not capable of exceeding speeds of 20 miles per hour." So this only deals with golf carts. So low-speed vehicles is really kind of a side consideration. If you want to change this, to mention low-speed vehicles, that we can do that. But my suggestion is, if we're going to do that, we're just going to say, you know, the state statute applies with regard to low-speed vehicles. And you'll remember, as the Vice Mayor had mentioned, there are different requirements for low-speed vehicles, including the necessity of a driver's license. Golf carts do not require a driver's license under the statute. So I would suggest making a couple of changes to the ordinances that it currently exists. And that would be in Section 66-100. I am suggesting that we delete a few words, and those words would be "holding and in possession of a valid driver's license." So the first paragraph would read, "It shall be lawful for a person to operate a golf cart as defined," and then it goes on. So we're just taking out the reference to valid driver's license there. Why are we taking it out? There is a state statute that specifically provides now that a driver's license is not necessary. It's exempted, and that exemption is under Florida Statute 322.04. It says the following persons are exempt from obtaining a driver's license, and subparagraph E says, "Any person operating a golf cart is defined in Section 320.01, which is operated in accordance with the provisions of 316-212." Those are the, those are some of the statutes that you've got in your packet. So I would suggest that we fix that. In addition to that, I would, we would be deleting Section 66-105 relating to driver's license. Lastly, I'm making a suggestion that we modify Section 66-106 relating to registration of golf carts and not make it mandatory, to make it voluntary. And the reason I'm suggesting that is, is that there is an Attorney General opinion out there, even though the state statute doesn't address it, the Attorney General has opined on registration of golf carts, and the Attorney General suggests that it just be on a voluntary basis and not mandatory. So I'm suggesting that we reword that paragraph to reflect that as well. But those would be the only changes that I would suggest that are needed to bring it in compliance with the state statutes that have been talked about in these last couple of meetings. The way that would be handled, of course, would be for me to draft that ordinance and bring it back for your consideration. There would be two public hearings to address that. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions if you have them.
Do we have any questions for Tom? Go ahead, Katie.
Thank you, Mayor. So I recognize that the Sheriff's Office placard here is dated 8/2016, but on the golf cart side, it does say golf cart operators must possess a valid driver's license pursuant to 322.03. So that is outdated then, because you read the exemption that now applies.
Yeah, that's, it's a state statute that became effective in, on April 2nd, 2013. And I'm just reading it, I read it word for word for you from the statute, and I'd be happy to pass that around if you'd like.
Tell Sheriff. Okay. So I want to run, and I know this is elementary, but this is a question I've been asked. Let's say I'm 14 years old. I'm driving down the road. I think I'm in a golf cart. I am not in a golf cart. I am in a low-speed vehicle. I get pulled over by the Sheriff's Office because I, I don't know, went through a stop sign. What happens?
So they would be subject to a citation for failing to have a driver's license and operating that vehicle, and maybe the deputy would be able to explain it a little bit more, but it would, it requires a driver's license. So there would be either a warning or a citation issued.
So it's not a defense to say, well, I thought this is a golf cart. This is a golf cart. This is not a low-speed vehicle.
Yeah, I don't think that's a defense. The vehicle is what it is as defined by statute.
Okay. So if you've got a license plate, and you've got all of the equipment that's mentioned on here, and it's insured, be advised, you have to have a driver's license.
If it is a low-speed vehicle.
Okay, if it's a, and yes, and it's a low-speed vehicle. If you're in a true golf cart, then after we contemplate these amendments, of course, you need to be in compliance with our code, and you must be a minimum of 14 years old.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's exactly what I needed to understand.
And there are some requirements as to the safety requirements for a golf cart versus the safety requirements for a low-speed vehicle.
Okay.
When you look at golf carts, and our, our code provision hits them all. It's almost word for word. So for a golf cart, they have to have safe tires, a rearview mirror, a red reflectorized warning device on the front and back of the golf cart. And if you are a golf cart that operates between sunset and sunrise, you have to have headlights, brake lights, turn signals, and a windshield. When you look at the low-speed vehicle statute, it's in your packet. It says it has to be equipped with headlamps, stop lamps, turn signal lamps, tail lamps, reflex reflectors, parking brakes, rearview mirrors, windshields, seat belts, which is an important one, and vehicle identification numbers. So there are a few more safety equipment requirements for a low-speed vehicle. And I think it's probably because of the fact that it's faster. So.
And then, just as a general question, I don't have a golf cart or a low-speed vehicle. Maybe you guys know. Are there people out there who think that they have a golf cart but in fact have a low-speed vehicle and are letting kids who are 14 operate it? Is that happening?
I can just tell you, from my neighborhood, I don't have any low-speed vehicles that I see, that I've witnessed.
No license plates.
Right. They're all golf carts. And I'm talking about Harbor Palms and East Lake Oaks.
Okay.
For me, that's, that's what I see.
Okay. What do you see?
I don't, I think there's one or two registered low-speed vehicles that I see.
Okay.
From a visualization standpoint.
Okay.
From the law standpoint, my golf cart's an LSV. It goes 23, 24. So by state definition, my golf cart that I own, I have to convert.
Okay. So you're saying there might be residents who own a low-speed vehicle without knowing it and need to take the steps to register and insure it?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I believe, I believe that's what, I mean, Tom, based upon state statute, golf carts, four-wheel vehicles up to 20 miles an hour, low-speed vehicles 20 to 25. So if a cart's doing 20, 25, I called Capital, every cart they sell goes above 20 miles an hour.
Oh.
So I'm not trying to get rid of golf carts. I'm not trying to get, it's an expensive process, and I don't want to put that burden on our citizens, but I think we need to understand. But by converting to a low-speed vehicle, you actually have more freedoms within the City of Oldsmar, because we can't, I mean, we can't write an ordinance about low-speed vehicles, because that's governed by state statute.
Granted, to the state.
Well, you can, you can say we only allow low-speed vehicles, but that opens up St. Pete Drive. That opens up Forest Lakes, all the way up to the north end of the Walmart parking lot. I don't remember the name of that road. It opens up Pine.
Crossing Tampa Road at Pine.
Crossing Tampa Road at Pine. It opens up a lot more for that person if they do convert, right? You don't have to convert. You can trade out and whatever. I'm not trying to sell golf carts or anything like that. I'm just trying to get compliant with what the law states, but also show the benefits to our residents if they did convert. It's a low-speed vehicle. It's tagged, titled, insured, registered. You got to be 15 to drive it. I don't want to get rid of golf carts. I think there's a lot of residents that have these, and I don't want to impact the residents, but I think there's, looking towards the future, five years down the road, maybe we'll only go low-speed vehicle at that point in time. Maybe. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. My real question on all of this, because it's, it's, now that we've defined the low-speed versus the golf cart, and golf carts are 14, and we can't write an ordinance to an unlicensed driver, how do we keep the 14s from driving around town? That's, that was your big, your big concern is how do you get the 14-year-olds, or even the 15-year-olds? How do you write something? Because we have the ability to write more restrictive ordinances, but how do we write that? How do we make that, Tom?
And that's how it all started. The officer pulled over my neighbor. She's 14. She was driving a golf cart, and that's what started this whole process that we're here right now.
Right, I recall.
Now she's, now she's 15.
It was my perception that we could not draft something that was more restrictive than state statute.
No, I think if.
There is one provision that allows for that.
Okay.
Okay. And, but it doesn't have to do with age. Okay?
It's the driver's license.
If you're licensed.
So it, we cannot draft a ordinance that talks about age.
Right.
You know, you know, if we wanted to make it more restrictive, change it from 14 to 15, or 16, or 17, or whatever, we're absolutely prohibited from doing that.
Got it.
But you can have it to say that they're, that driving is prohibited if it's a golf cart, if it is with an unlicensed driver. Is that correct?
You don't have to be licensed on a golf cart.
On a golf cart. Yeah, it's like circular.
Yeah.
It is.
It's like we could add, we.
You can be more restrictive if they're unlicensed, but, but you can't flat-out restrict the, the operation in general, essentially.
So I found a, an Attorney General opinion that talks about, you know, what does that mean when you say, "Ordinances referred to in this section must apply only to an unlicensed driver," and the legislative intent review by the AGO says, find it in this paragraph here. Okay. As noted in Section 316.212, Florida statutes generally prohibit the operation of golf carts on public roads and streets of the state, but specifically authorize municipalities designate certain roads for use by golf carts. A municipality may enact an ordinance relating to golf cart operation equipment which is more restrictive than those enumerated in 316.212, but it may apply only to an unlicensed driver. And the Attorney General is saying, "You request clarification of the term 'must apply' to an unlicensed driver." This language was added to Section 316.212 Florida statute, was amended during the 2005 legislative session. As initially proposed, House Bill 1697 contained language that authorized local governments to enact more restrictive golf cart equipment and operation regulations than the state law provides. The language limiting such ordinance to an unlicensed driver was by amendment on the Senate floor without discussion. There is no readily discernible legislative history indicating any intent behind adding such a restriction other than the plain language of the statute. So even the AGO doesn't know what that means.
I love the legislature.
So I wouldn't try to figure out how much more we can restrict the use of the golf carts, because unless what we did was, we had prepared an ordinance, and we had sent it to the AGO and said, "The City Council of the City of Oldsmar wants to know, in your opinion, whether or not this more restrictive requirement is authorized under state statute to get an AGO to either support us or tell us, no, we can't do that." That's another option, AGO opinion. But I don't really know what, how you want to make it any more restrictive than what you've got, what you've got right now.
Thank you. Any other questions for Tom? So do we have a consensus then? Let Tom, what he suggested to the council, get back with us? Are we okay with that?
Well, right now, we're basically making it, it's, the suggestions would make it a little bit less restrictive, right, and in alignment with the state statute.
Yes.
And from there, it would be, we would have to, we, we're not going to ask them, hey, what do you think? And how restrictive can it get, right? It's like, we have to essentially propose language and then have it reviewed, right? It's not, here, offer us up what you think, AGO.
I think that that would be the best approach. If you want to go to the AGO and ask for direction, you know, we should provide them with what our suggested language is, but it's not going to be age. They're going to outright tell us that we're not going to be able to restrict that.
Right. Good point, though. Thank you.
Can, so if you don't do age, can you do perm, valid driver's license?
No, because remember that state statute 322.04 specifically says that golf carts, any person operating a golf cart is not required to have a driver's license. So there's no question on that. It's, it's.
We got to live with 14-year-olds driving golf carts.
Yes.
So it sounds to me like.
Well, I, sorry to interject. That'd be, the only thing would be, it's like, if you're not focusing on age, if you had something that says unlicensed drivers, even though we know, because it's like, the language is in there, right, says, you can make something more restrictive as it relates to an unlicensed driver. So if they are unlicensed, there are restrictions in place. What that is, as far as all, only these streets, only these times, anything like that, would be more restrictive to a unlicensed driver if it's focused using that language from state statute, essentially, right? That's the only opening, because we know it can't be based on age or saying.
Driver's license.
Driver's license.
Maybe it's, you know, eyesight. Maybe it's, you know, you don't have the correct, if you don't, if you're a hearing impaired person, do you want to restrict that person? Maybe, maybe it's vision. I mean, I mean, there are other things, I think. I really haven't spent a whole lot of time on that, but, but what's the goal? I guess, figure out what the goal is, and then let's just figure out backwards how we can get to that point, whatever that point is.
I think all of us are thinking safety in kids 14 who have no formal training or knowledge base of rules of the road, and just preventing the worst potential outcome that we don't want to think about. If somebody has a permit.
That's about it.
They know the rules of the roads, but there's no way to get around the language in what I'm hearing.
So, you know, you could always talk to your legislative delegation and propose a change to that state statute, to change it from 14 to 15, 15 or 16, depending upon whether you have.
Or ask them to just remove that language. Remove the restriction on licensed driver.
Allow municipalities to decide their own age. Yeah, another option.
Good idea, too.
So, but we should definitely change to get in compliance with what you're recommending today.
I really think that we need to do that. We need to make these changes. I mean, there's never been an issue, you know, since it was adopted, but now that, you know, it's come to, you know, everyone's attention, let's fix it.
Yes.
And then, if, want to do something after that, obviously, it's just an ordinance. It's only two public hearings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good old public hearing. Go ahead, go ahead.
I agree with the stated goals that Vice Mayor said. I think, in a way, it sounds like it's a little bit of a public awareness campaign of the fact that, like, you may have a low-speed vehicle, and your 14-year-old cannot drive it. If it is, you could be cited for it, and you need to have insurance and a tag on it. And congratulations, you don't have to abide by the golf, you know, the golf cart ordinances.
Right.
But, but, I mean, that, that is my big concern. People think that they have a golf cart, and they're driving it around, thinking, I'm allowed to have a golf cart. I'm, my kid can drive it. They're 14, when what they actually have is a low-speed vehicle that needs to be insured. They need a licensed driver, and they need to have insurance.
And the defining factor is the, the speed capability of it.
And the defining factor is.
Because that, that's what sets the requirements of the equipment.
That's, that's my concern. I guess, when, when you said, what's the goal? That would be my goal, is to make sure people know the intent of the golf cart ordinances for the City of Oldsmar versus what do you have in your garage, and what do you think you're allowed to do with it? Because you might be misunderstanding. Because honestly, I was misunderstanding some of the restrictions between low-speed vehicles and golf carts. I mean, the Sheriff's Office flyer has, you know, an incorrect statement on golf cart operators must possess a valid driver's license pursuant to the statute that, that you just read is exempted now. So in any event, I'm in agreement with the recommendations of council to amend our ordinance, but I do think there's still a concern about the low-speed vehicles. I don't, I don't know what to do with it. I don't know if that's something we can talk about at a later date, or how we can address that, but I think we all share that concern.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilwoman Knapp, hold on.
I have, I have a question.
Sure.
In, that is general to the statute, and this is for the city manager. The last section in, last sentence, excuse me, in Section 1 states, "Upon a determination that golf carts may be safely operated on a designated road or street, the responsible." the responsible governmental entity shall post appropriate signs to indicate that such operation is allowed. We don't have any such signage anywhere that's designating what, where it is or isn't allowed. Is that correct?
Yeah.
I believe we have signs that, that, that indicate the limits of, of where the allowable use is.
Okay.
So there's some, on either side of St. Pete Drive, it says, like, no golf cart crossing. There's, uh, at the trails, like parks, there's no golf carts.
I just wasn't sure, because I haven't seen it enough before, been noticing that, or driving around at the speed of a golf cart to see it.
We have them in East Lake Oaks, too.
Okay.
Are you in a golf cart or a low-speed vehicle?
Either.
Kidding.
Kidding. All right, Vice Mayor.
I just really have a question about process. Are we still working under the authorization to write the ordinance that we authorized Tom to do? Or do we have to reauthorize and then go to two public hearings?
So there's nothing under your code or your policies and procedures that require you to review it and then authorize the city attorney? It's just a practice that, that we've had here at the city council. So whatever is your pleasure. If you would like to put it on the agenda for seeking authorization to have the city attorney do it, and then the two public hearings after that, in other words, it's here three times? You know, that's up to you.
I think we should do our regular practice. That's, that's three chances for the public to be made aware of it. That's a chance for Councilmember Graber to be here as well.
Yep. Yeah, I like that.
I know.
So we're all in consensus. I, uh, Councilor Napp, you agree? Yes? Okay. I got one question, Tom. If we don't make these changes, is it, is it a cut dry? Yes or no? No golf carts or make these changes and we'll be okay?
No, the, this, this change would only correct a situation where the person could be cited. And so it basically is an unenforceable provision in the code. So, you know, if, if someone was pulled over and they were aged fourteen and our code says sixteen, and they went to county court under the citation, that all the defense attorney would have to do is to say, hey, he only has to be fourteen under the statute, and then the citation would be dismissed. So it would be something that we would just tell the deputies that we don't want to enforce within the city of Oldsmar during this period of time that we're making the changes. But to answer your question is, is, no, it doesn't have any effect on the legality of the rest of the code.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Before we leave this topic, deputy, would you, is there anything that you'd like to share with us or shed light on your, like, actual experience?
I can only reiterate what our documentation says.
Okay.
And will we go by? Announced county ordinance station must be licensed to drive a golf cart. So that would apply to. The statute does say that a golf cart is defined as a motor vehicle. And state statute states that anyone operating a motor vehicle must be licensed. So it kind of, in our eyes, they must be a licensed driver operating a golf cart.
Okay.
That's how we operate under law rules. Not just based off of, I'm only reading you, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, what I can tell you. Just exactly what the statute says. Just what the county ordinance says and how you guys interpret that and adopt it is.
Do you find that you encounter mainly low-speed vehicles that people think or are operating as golf carts? Or is that just my perception?
The restrictions that, that, that are stated that make a golf cart, go from golf carts to low-speed vehicles are fairly minor when it comes to speed. Some people's golf carts do go faster than they, they probably realize and they could be classified as LSP. But I don't have any firsthand experience to say that I know someone driving an LSP driving a golf cart.
Okay.
As, um, as we stated earlier, if you're operating a vehicle on a road, you should know where it is and you're subject to whatever money you may incur because you're an actual driver. So if it is an LSP and the deputy decides that they're going to find out it's an LSP and it is, and the person's not operating correctly or not licensed, then they could be, you know, reprimanded in Debbie's.
Discretion.
Whatever it says. He has his discretion.
Sure.
Warning or citation or whatever.
Understood. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for the deputy? All right, then, we will add it to our next agenda. All right? Next item on the agenda is review reimbursement for council member expenses. Anne is the one who started this, and what happened was I got an email saying that as of ten six to, I believe it's four four, four four twenty-three, I only have five hundred and ninety-three dollars and nineteen cents left on my budget for my travel expenses for the, um, the year. Also, I want to just bring up that in two thousand and fifteen, Mayor Beavis is the one that put me on the FLC, the Florida League of Cities, um, advocate for the Suncoast League of Cities. And then Mayor Seidel put me on the PSTA board, which really, there's no expenses for that. But a lot of this is because of our CRA expenses, and I believe you guys have a copy of that. I, from Anne sent that. But anybody else want to bring up any other expenses? I know Jared, you mentioned something about shirts and local travel. Vice Mayor, do you want to start out then with that, or?
I, I mean, for me, I, I haven't done much here as far as travel. I, I did the emo course and everything else. You know, to me, the, the stuff that we're doing here, it goes back to the same concept that we had with the five oh one C threes. What is the value and benefit back to the citizens? I'm not doubting anything that I saw in these expenses as there wasn't a value, there wasn't an education, there wasn't a, I, I don't know where I'd be today if it wasn't for that emo course, right?
Exactly.
It's just like drinking from a fire hose up here. So while I understand the need, I want to make sure that, you know, we're smart about this moving forward. But I think there's also been a dynamic shift in the makeup of the council, because when I look through this, and I, I'm trying to say this in the right way, but Dan, you're the only guy up here without kids and, and real.
Right.
And a full-time job. So we're not looking to do exterior travel or additional travel, or at least I'm not, I should say you guys are. But if there's an education opportunity, you know, I'm going to, um, the MPO course for, uh, Forward Pinellas in April. But that's not city expense, that's, that's Forward Pinellas. But anytime there's an area for opportunity that's going to benefit the city, yes, we should do it. But how do we get smart about it? Because I'm seeing globally the, um, how do I say this the most appropriate way? The economic impact of the inflation and how that's affecting our budgets. And my concern is, three, four years down the road, where are we going to be? What, what decisions are we going to be forced to make for these types of decisions?
Okay. Councilor Gannon, you have any comments, please?
Sure, I think, um, Vice Mayor Buckman brings up a, a good point. How do we, how do we get smart about this? How do we deal with this? And to me, um, our city clerk put some helpful questions on the agenda item originally from December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Staff requests council consider and advise on the following questions. Should council members be reimbursed for mileage related to day trips? If council members are allowed such reimbursement, should it be limited to travel outside city limits? Are there other expenses which should be considered that are not currently reimbursed? So my inquiry, of course, because I am who I am, led me back to the charter. So our charter makes very clear in section three point oh four, salary and expenses, members of the council shall also receive their actual and necessary expenses incurred in the performance of their duties of office. So, I mean, I, it's hard for me to say this out loud. I'm, I'm a bit of a con, a conservative person when, when it comes to construction of the language in our charter. So for me, when I see actual and necessary expenses for the performance of their duties of office, well, our duties are to, under three point oh one, adopt resolutions, appoint charter officials, exercise the powers hereinafter provided, and we shall review, amend if necessary, and approve the budget and appropriate all monies to the city. Okay, so our duty is partially to budget. And we have a budget that we have been tasked to stick to for our city council. We did a very painstaking analysis, in fact, to find a way to meet the budget when it came to charitable donations, which I think was an important exercise for all of us in budgeting. Because it's hard to say no, right? It's hard to decline someone's request. We, as council members, are very privileged to be asked to join certain boards, participate in certain activities, like Leadership Pinellas, for which I'm a board member, Forward Pinellas, for which Vice Mayor and I are, are, I'm, you're on the Forward Pinellas, I don't want to misstate it.
I understand.
Which one is your, I'm on the School Transportation Safety Committee. You're on the.
Board.
The actual board, so you're on the actual board. Mayor is on, um, the PSTA.
And Florida League of Cities or Suncoast.
And the Suncoast League of Cities board. I'm not sure of everybody's, uh, different things, but we are privileged to be able to participate in, in those things. In my opinion, under a strict reading of our charter, are those things actual and necessary expenses incurred in the performance of the duties of office as outlined in our charter? No. However, I recognize that it has been customary for council members to, and the mayor, of course, to attend certain educational opportunities that make us better at what we do here in Oldsmar. As you mentioned, drinking from a fire hose, right? Emo. Great opportunity to learn and to be better at what we're doing up here. There are certain limitations to what I think is educational and necessary when it comes to the scope of activities and committee appointments and things offered by the Florida League of Cities. I recognize that they offer a lot of different opportunities. I know, Mayor, you've taken advantage of and benefited from many of those things. I cannot discern necessarily the direct benefit of all of those to the city of Oldsmar. While the Legislative Committee is important, we don't necessarily benefit directly here in Oldsmar from those activities. The benefit for us has come directly from the sixty grand we pay a year out of the same budget to our lobbyists in Tallahassee for things that are very specific to the city of Oldsmar and not just general legislative policy for home rule. Again, I recognize that's extremely important. But when it comes down to it, okay, council members, mayor, if you want to take those educational opportunities, great. If you want to be involved in these things, great. Here's your allotment of money with which to do that. And I think it's incumbent upon each of us, just as we've asked charitable organizations, to decide ahead of time and submit ahead of time, what is it that you want to use your budget for in the coming year? Do you want to go to the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference? Do you want to go to emo? Do you want to go to a CRA conference? What is it that you want to do with this budget? And hopefully, you know, you can articulate what benefit comes back to the city of Oldsmar for participation in those events. I, of course, did, um, math problems based on the spreadsheets that were provided by our finance department. And just so that the public's aware, we were provided a summary of city council travel and education expenditures for fiscal years nineteen, twenty, twenty and twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three to date, keeping in mind that our fiscal year begins ten, one, twenty twenty-two. So there's not a whole lot, you know, six months of information here. My understanding, and somebody, please stop me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that we began keeping this spreadsheet dividing out by council member and mayor everyone's expenses, so that we could see where the money was being spent on what, beginning in twenty nineteen, when Mayor Seidel suggested this. I actually requested this data. I actually was hoping to obtain data for further back, but I was unaware that it only went back to twenty nineteen.
You, you asked for this?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, so did I.
Yes.
I got.
And.
Couldn't get it.
So when I do the math, now, keeping in mind that this data does not encompass the three years, Mayor, that you were a council member from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, except a tiny sliver of twenty nineteen. And also, it doesn't include Mayor Seidel's three prior years as a council member from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen. But when you look at this data, it's undeniable and very clear that, um, Mayor, you've spent approximately ten thousand, six hundred and five dollars on these various activities, legislative conferences, um, for the Florida League of Cities, the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference, the policies, the different committee, committees, the CRA conference. And, you know, next closest would be, um, Councilmember Napp of who, of the folks who are currently, uh, sitting up here, at six thousand, six hundred and ninety-one. But his includes, um, thirty-two hundred dollars for Leadership Pinellas, which I know, Mayor, you participated in prior to the data that we have here. And I'm at four thousand, eight hundred and twelve, which again, includes twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars for Leadership Pinellas, which, um, if you deduct that, then Andrew's at thirty-four hundred and I'm at two thousand. So the last four years, you know, being at ten thousand, six hundred and five dollars, I think it's just a clear question of budgeting. I think it's deciding in advance what you want to go to and when. I don't think, in answer to Anne's questions, I don't think council members should be reimbursed for day trips. I think reimbursement should be limited to travel outside city limits. I can't think of any expenses that should be considered that are not currently reimbursed. I know that was long, tried to get it all in there. Open any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at this overall and, and kind of the same thought process of looking at the charter, kind of falling in, in line with what Councilmember Gannon just stated as far as the actual necessary expenses. You know, that's the black and white reading there. I think what it comes down to, again, is there is, is a fair assumption that there is value in all these types of activities that are going on amongst all of us, right? I think the one that is probably easiest to agree upon that provides the most impact or potential impact to this council and therefore our residents as well, is the opportunities for education and training. Because, you know, we don't, we don't learn what we're doing up here in school, right? We might get a little bit of a civics class, but that's, that's about it. And to get up here and sit up here, it's, it's, you know, you're, you're learning by jumping right in. So having those emo classes, I wish there were more. That's, that's what's going to allow us to function and operate as a body as efficiently as possible. As it relates to emo, and then also, you know, there's the FLC conference. That in and of itself, you just say, oh, it's a conference. Anybody hears that, think, oh, well, everybody's just going and networking and whatnot. As we all know, for being there, it's like, there is a substantial amount of wealth of information that can be learned by all those different sessions at the conference, if, if, if one participates in said sessions. So I, that's kind of where I stand, is that's where I see the most value. I'm not opposed to consideration for other things as long as, as we plan for it. Now granted, it is hard to kind of know what all is out on the calendar, especially for things such as emo, where the dates may only be so far out and may not extend far enough out into the following fiscal year when we're trying to budget. far enough out into the following fiscal year when we're trying to budget, right? So, but you know it's probably going to happen to where you may not know the exact date, but you know, it's likely to be offered during this fiscal year. Therefore, I want to stake out some amount of funds for said activity. So I think really it comes down to looking at what we want to do, being more, being a bit more smart about what do we want to spend money on that is reasonable, stands to benefit in some manner our operation as a body, which we know will impact our residents, and kind of take it from there. So I don't know what that looks like in terms of a more refined process or making sure that that is a segment of our budgeting process is probably the most likely thing. But having some forewarning as to, here's what the expectations are from us when we show up to that meeting. You know, not just saying, well, you know, I think I want to do this, or there might be something come up and just throw out a number, right? Let's, let's support what we're going to do instead of just carving out whole thousand-dollar number increments where we can, we can be a little bit more refined and sharpen our pencils to not just say, well, and granted, if we don't spend the money, then, you know, we make a budget revision and it gets fixed that way through the accounting process.
That's what we ask staff to do.
Right, so, I mean, we're employees too, technically, so we should do our due diligence.
Not really employees, don't say employees. Quasi-employed.
But that aside, is we can certainly put in our effort to budget what we're responsible for ultimately. And that's kind of where I think we're, we put the onus on us a little bit to say, here's what we expect to expend, justify it, rank it accordingly, and if we have to prioritize and say, well, you know, this might be a little excessive, and kind of take it from there. We obviously would have to do that in a public meeting, to do it all in advance possibly of the main budget session? I don't know, that would be something where probably at the suggestions or advice of our city manager can help us carve out a more robust process for defining our budget as we move forward.
All right, Vice Mayor, you have any other comments before I go?
I, the only thing I would say is there's a value of visibility, right? You know, we're not the biggest city in the state. And going to some of the things like the Florida League of Cities, the conference, I have not been. But my question is, I'm assuming based on this number here, it's about 550 per person to go to the Florida League of Cities Conference just for the course itself, and then another. Is that where a condensed version of EMO, I haven't been yet, so I don't know. But is that a course that, that's our one time per year? Or do we carve that out? Just throwing ideas out, so.
Okay. So I want to just, I have a couple of comments, and Katie, I really appreciate what you had said. Because you had mentioned it's like, it's been like $10,000. Now remember, I've been to all four EMO classes, and I do remember one thing.
Doesn't include any of those.
No, I know, I know, I know. And one thing I want to mention is I remember this situation came up with Councilmember Norris. I don't know what year it was, it's not in the records, I tried to find it.
Yes.
Councilmember Norris went to Washington DC, and I don't know if you guys were on council at that, at that time, but Ann was upset that she spent this exuberant amount of money to go to Washington DC to see President Obama. And it was, it was the first time that the expenses of a councilperson was brought up, that it was expensive to do that.
She what?
I don't know what she went, I remember she went to DC, I was, I was a rookie at that point, I really didn't know what was going on. I think it was 2015 or 16, I don't remember, but she went to DC for something, but she went to see the president.
The purpose of the visit was?
I don't know, I don't know what the purpose was, I don't remember, I don't recall. But I remember that was the first time there was a situation where the money was, a situation.
What happened?
So all these, this history data that I'm really appreciative of the, of the city staff to put these, these expense reports together, I think this is wonderful. Because it shows that the education is so important for us here as council members. It's so important that I went to all these things. And I'm going to give you a perfect example. This year, I attended the CRA 101 class. Called Felicia on the phone, it's eight o'clock at night. What's our vision, what's our mission? I have to get up and do a report tomorrow for our CRA. They want me to stand up in class. Don't have one. So there's a perfect example right there, that that education from the Redevelopment Agency, from the Florida League of Cities, helped us because I hear, oh, 20 years, 20 years we've been working on downtown. We never had a vision, we never had a mission statement. So that is a, that right there in itself, the education, that, that particular expense, whether you call it the people's money, whatever you want to call it, but that was needed for us. It took us to the right direction. You brought it up also at one of the council meetings, Councilmember Gannon, the Florida Redevelopment Agency Awards. There it is, right here, our new processes, right here, right?
It wasn't that, but I know what you're talking about.
Well anyways, it was one, this is one of the things that could be an award. That's something that could be an award. And I'm glad you brought up the Leadership Pinellas, because I noticed mine, I didn't see mine on there either.
It would have been prior to 2015.
So the, and then the, the conference, the Florida Redevelopment, the Redevelopment Conference that I went to in Daytona Beach. I noticed Paula was on here, but she didn't even go, she couldn't go. And that's fine that it's on there, but I paid the $75, but that was also important because I learned about the hurricane, the hurricane came through Daytona Beach and South Daytona Beach, was completely devastated from that hurricane. Still flooded when I was there, even though I drove out. And I learned so much about density increase from a class that I attended, like Councilmember Knapp said. It's important when you go to these, these classes if you're going to attend. One thing I wanted to mention, I did mention this to Ann and to Felicia, that Friday, we had a meeting for the Sun Coast League of Cities, and I explained to them that there's some expenses that are due, and the city would like to know if there would be any type of reimbursement from the Sun Coast League of Cities. And they did agree that they would pay for some of my expenses. So that's been approved, that was voted on by the board, and it was unanimously approved by the Sun Coast League of Cities. So that isn't going to be off the table now for any expenses for the future or the remainder of the year. I don't, when I go to these things, I am, like Councilmember Vice Mayor just said, I don't have any kids, this is a full-time job for me as mayor. I love being mayor of the city. This is what I do. I want to do this, I want to educate myself, I want to learn, I want to keep going. I want what's best for the city of Oldsmar. I'm not going here to play games and party, I'm here to work. And I just want you all to know that. I'm committed to the city, so whether it's another $500 or $300, I wanted to get this all on the table right now. This is where I am, and this is where I'm headed. I don't want to stop. I have two other classes that I want to attend for the Florida Redevelopment Agency. They're about building the downtown, our downtown, and there's, there's two other classes I want to attend. I'm not interested in getting my certification, because Felicia has brought that up, I'm not interested in that. I'm interested in attending educational classes that are going to help this city. And other than that, I'm going to open it up to anybody who has any questions for me. And I think Councilmember Gannon, you have questions?
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts. Vice Mayor, I would encourage you to attend the Florida League of Cities Conference if you're able and it works for you, and make your own judgment about what you feel the educational value is to you personally. And Mayor, I don't debate that you find educational value in these things that you're attending. That's not what I'm saying. And I think that we could go back and forth as to what each of us thinks is of benefit to the city of Oldsmar. What I am saying, though, is we ask our staff to stick by their budget. I think it's only fair that we do the same exact thing. I understand that education is important. However, I don't think that we should be spending more on our education than we allow our staff to spend to become educated in their positions that are their day-in, day-out jobs doing for the city, whereas we are elected officials here for a temporary basis. In general, I get the redevelopment thing, I get the CRA Conference, but I think it's worth mentioning that our CRA is sunsetting. You know, and a lot of this information can be learned in other ways that don't involve travel, that don't involve, you know, driving across the state or flying to Fort Lauderdale. I'm just pointing out that the numbers are there. I understand you have a quest to become more educated and to serve the people, we all know how passionate you are. I am as well. I educate myself in different ways, and that's okay. But I think it's important that we hold ourselves accountable to what we have budgeted. That's all I'm saying.
All right, anybody else? All right, Felicia, what's the next step? What do we need to do?
What do you need to do?
I'm going to defer to the city clerk.
Okay.
All right, so what do we need to do? On the next but, our next agenda, I think you have on there, Mayor, to request an increase in your travel budget, so that will be on there. I do think it's important to note that there has been inflationary stuff, but we'll talk about that as the, at the regular agenda item, we'll bring that up. So for those wanting to attend the annual conference, I'm not so sure that there's enough money, so I'm going to review that, and I'll bring that up. But, and as I understand, though, part of the question was, what else do you consider to be reimbursable? So generally, are you guys okay if there's reimbursement for day trips or for, yeah, Councilmember Gannon answered those questions, but I didn't really get from the rest, you know, how you feel about other reimbursements.
Do you guys want to see?
Are there any other items that you might seek reimbursement for that we should consider? Or should we just, as something comes up, address it at that point, maybe bring it up as a council agenda item? Because that's the other way we can respond to requests for reimbursement.
So Vice Mayor, are you the one that brought up the local going to the meetings back and forth for reimbursement? Was that?
I don't, I, I
Yeah.
I per, I mean, I personally don't have a problem with that expense of going to Clearwater for those.
I mean, I mean, right, I, I mean, for me.
I don't think anybody's ever stopped reimbursing for all of it.
I've paid for all that.
Yeah.
Since I became elected, I've never asked for mileage to go to the Sun Coast League of Cities Board Meeting.
Or PSTA.
Or PSTA or anything.
Or Forward Pinellas or anything.
Delegation meetings, when I went to that, not, not once. So is that something that we want to put on the agenda, do we want to talk about that, or?
So it sounds like there's consensus regarding number one, should council members be reimbursed for mileage related to day trips?
I don't want to be reimbursed.
Sounds like a no.
I don't want nothing to do with that.
If councils members are allowed such reimbursement, should it be limited to travel outside city limits for mileage, I'm assuming this, this one pertains to?
Yeah.
Okay, so for mileage, should it be limited to travel outside of city limits?
Personally, I would think it should be more of a amount of miles minimum, because, okay, if it's something in Safety Harbor, again, are we really looking for reimbursement to go to Safety Harbor? I don't think that's the case, right? So was it 50 miles, 100 miles of travel that then makes sense for reimbursement?
Right.
That's, that's kind of not uncommon in business, where it's like, if you're around town, so be it. But if you're going to go far, then you're eligible for reimbursement.
That's a good example, so for my work, if it's more than 50 miles, you can seek reimbursement, otherwise it's, and ours, I don't know how we do it, but ours is measured from our office.
Right.
As opposed to our home, but.
Okay. And Ann, one question for you, you mentioned shirts. I was told at the beginning, when I first elected, we get two shirts when you're elected, correct?
Right, it's a couple shirts, and then sometimes you need more, it's like, I don't know, a couple a year or something. We usually now pay for embroidery, and you, you will buy your own shirts.
Right, I've done that too.
Recently, though, Mayor, Vice Mayor Buckman, I think, were you, yeah, we had, we had to buy the, or we ended up purchasing two shirts for Forward Pinellas for, as, you know, you appoint him to the board, and he bought two shirts, we had to, we paid, ended up paying for that, that was city money. So would you have considered that as okay? I don't know, maybe I should.
I was always told we get two shirts. That's it. Buy your own shirts.
But she's talking about shirts that say Forward Pinellas on them?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, don't, we have, we have other line items besides the two breakouts for travel, lodging, meals, and education registration, that would fall under the other line items, right?
Yeah, there's promotional activities.
That's already a budgeted line item, and again, it's the same thing, you know, we've been primarily focused on travel or education, but same goes for there. If I think, well, man, you know, and in the past, we've talked about, man, it'd be nice to have nice shirts, segue into next agenda item for being outside, right? At an event, instead of heavy cotton shirts, nice lightweight shirts, well, that falls under there. But again, try to project to say, you know, if we think it's appropriate to get a couple more shirts, adjust those, adjust it accordingly on the budget. So we have that line item as a breakout of our overall council budget.
Right, and that's not, that's not separated by council members, the promotional activities or other current charges, it could be a couple of different areas, but it's still your budget, so what are you comfortable with as far as allowing staff to reimburse?
I mean, is there, like, are you looking like for a monetary limit? So if a single council member or mayor requests for reimbursement in excess of $100 for shirts, we should all be made aware, or what?
Anything like that could be helpful for the city clerk, I think. So if there's something, I mean, we could say that, are you guys comfortable with the idea if it's more than $100 that we should bring it to council for consideration?
Sure.
Yeah, just so you know what the running tab is for any, for any budget item, whether it's promotional, travel, and all this sort of stuff.
I'm also going to talk to Scott Dudley in regards to the Florida League of Mayors to see if any of that is reimbursable to the city. Because I, and the city has been paying for those expenses for those board meetings, and I don't know, I haven't, I've never asked them since this has come up. But I, but since it's come up, I asked the Sun Coast, I got them to approve it, so let me see if I can get them to approve it. Okay? So that'll, that'll wipe out a lot of this expense.
Are there other expenses which should be considered that are not currently reimbursed? Is there anything you guys can think of? I mean, it's not, it's not that we can't bring them up after this, it's just, is there anything that comes to mind?
Well, there, there's maybe the opposite of that, just kind of looking back through some of our stuff, is some other events that we've attended that are kind of bucketed under travel right now on here. I don't know if that's necessarily the appropriate place to do it, like an awards dinners and things like that. I don't know if it would be appropriate, again, and this is maybe pointing towards a separate work session of a council budgeting work session in advance of the general budgeting work session, or one of the agenda sections of it, to say, are all the types of line items that we have there right now the appropriate buckets of grouping things in? Or should event, events, appearances, like the Vice Mayor said, there is value in appearances, right? So should we budget that accordingly as participation in different types of events? You know, we've touched on that from, some of it got into the realm of the charitable donations. So again, I think it's more pointing towards a, a more robust council budgeting process.
And so, if I may, insert here, as I work on the budget for next year, I did, for instance, put the John Maroney Dinner in, into the promotional activities rather than the charitable contributions. And so there are different changes like that, but what we can do as we go forward, once the final department, but, so we, my, my deadline for getting that budget in is March 10th. But, you know, that's by line item, and I, and that's fairly descriptive, and so I can send that to you guys. And that would give you guys a chance to kind of look it over, and then at the budget meeting, when we have the operational budget meeting, you can bring it up and say, hey, I'm not so sure that this belongs here, if you have questions like that. So it gives you actually a few months' chance to review it.
Yeah, kind of do, do more homework, do more homework on it in preparation of budgeting.
Okay.
All right, so we're good? Any other comments?
That covers.
All right, it'll be on the agenda, the city council meeting, and we'll, I'm going to do my homework when I need to get done, because you guys have given me a lot of good feedback. Very thankful for that, and I'll do my homework, and then at that council meeting, I'll report back to you then. Next item on our agenda is discuss volunteering as a council at community events, and I believe Vice Mayor, you put this on the agenda, I'm going to let you have the floor, okay?
Yeah, I, so, thank you, Mayor. Looking at what we volunteer for, I'm not opposed to it, I'm not against it, but to me, when we're out in the public eye, you know, I think being accessible, but not only being accessible, but being accessible and able to have to have conversations where there's no risk involved, um, I think there's a value to the community in that measure. I think there's a value that we could provide back to our citizens that, um, we're just not always, I'm, I'm saying this, but it's, we're always not in the beer tent, right? Um, what other things could we be doing? When I left the meeting the other night, Jason Sanders pulled me aside. He's like, what do you want to do? I'm like, I'll run around and pick up trash. I mean, I was, I owned a trash company at one point in my life, so I don't mind going around and doing that. Um, and it gives the opportunity to, to me, talk to other people, talk to citizens, and, and show the, if you will, human nature. And I know that's what the, the, the volunteering at the tents have meant to do, but how do we do it in a way that kind of opens it up a little bit more? Do we, we say community events, but do we adopt the street? In January, I'll go out and clean the street with my family. In February, you go out. So we don't have to call a meeting, but we go out and take care of that street. Are there other things that we can do to drive community engagement, to show that we're not just doing this on communication level, but we're also doing it on a personal level? With that being said, we also spend a lot of time on council. We have had, I think, um, say this, uh, when I interviewed with all of you prior to running for council, um, no one ever said it was this many workshops and this much going on. So we've, we've been a very busy council. Um, and we all have families and time to weigh, but I just wanted to open this up. What else can we do that is out there that's available to us as ideas? I, I've got the street idea, um, at Oldsmar Days and Nights, Celebrate Oldsmar. If I'm allowed, I'll go around and pick up trash, whatever. Um, just trying to find a ways to engage the community from a human standpoint, not just from the, uh, technology or communication standpoint.
All right. Does anybody else have any comments? Go ahead.
I would say that I, I, I certainly love the idea of having consistent communication about getting out and doing other things. You know, I, I think all of us tend to bring up different events that are going on, right? But usually, it's like where they're at the event instead of being part of the event. So, and, and to an extent, some of those are really more recreational in nature where, okay, there might be paid staff doing something, um, whether there's an opportunity or not to volunteer or help that organization or event do something. So just as an example, because I'm trying to think it through as, as you're speaking, Vice Mayor, but, you know, we've got Armadillo Run coming up. I'm probably going to run in it, but that doesn't preclude anybody else from saying, hey, we want to help hold water bottles out at the water station, you know, things like that where, um, we have the opportunity during council comments to be like, maybe that's part of council comments. Hey, what are we going to do in the next coming month with all these events that are going on? We want to get, go out and do something else. So, I mean, we talk about it all the time of things going on, but then it's just, do we want to, uh, team up or, or split up? However, it makes sense to say, well, we're here to, to help through some other event. So.
All right.
Fine by me.
Good point. Gannon?
Yeah. So similar to Councilmember Napp's comments, you know, I'm a member of the Women's Club of Oldsmar, and we participate in a number of events. We have a street, um, that we have adopted. Um, we do our quarterly cleanup. Um, we just had the super party. Um, and it, it does tend to be a bit overwhelming attending all of that in addition to all of our city council commitments and commitments to events as well, um, as well as meetings and work sessions. Um, I'm not opposed to changing the dynamic of, because it was kind of brought up, like, the serving beer at, um, whether it's celebrate Oldsmar or Oldsmar Days and Nights, if we wanted to do something else at that particular event, if that was the concern. Um, I think it's incumbent on each of us to become involved in, um, whatever capacity we, we feel is appropriate. I was under the impression that, you know, based on the way it was worded, discuss volunteering as a council at community events, that you, you were saying like, we should all do something together at one time. Um, so I, I, you know, I, I wouldn't be opposed to it, but we do do a lot together at one time. When I saw you guys Saturday, I saw Dan earlier today. We were filming a video for Pinellas County School Board. We're seeing each other right now. I'll see you guys on Thursday, and then I'll see you next Tuesday. So it, it's a lot.
Reason.
It's a lot, right? Technically, everything we do i- is volunteering, but I do understand what you're saying about being accessible. When we're at different events, for example, like this past weekend when we were all out at BMX, you know, not everybody can always come to everything, but I find that people still approach me at different events, and I feel that we're accessible even when we're serving beer. I feel that we're really accessible.
Okay.
But if there's some event in particular that you were interested in having us do, I, I'm happy to talk about it.
I, it wasn't a, I mean, it started with the beer tents, yes, um, and feedback I was getting from citizens, like, why are you guys always serving beer? Why are you always serving beer, right? And I'm like, we're serving Diet Cokes and Waters too. There's, there's regular beverages there too. Um, so it was just something that I wanted to bring up, discuss, uh, you know, not trying to say formalize the process, but, you know, I like what Councilmember, uh, Napp said, where who's going to cover this? Who wants to cover this? Who wants to cover this? And, and just make it a little bit more formalized so that in advance, they know, hey, city council member's going to be there, somebody's going to be there, this person's going to be there. At the big events, BMX, Days and Nights, Celebrate Oldsmar, they're always going to know we're going to be there, right? Um, but at these other events, I, I, I think just making it known. Um, and then is there any, are there other events in the community that we can team up together? Because there is a value to the team building inside of the beer tent. Just trying to figure that out.
Well, I just, I, I just want to give you a little quick example. I remember when I first got on council, they were doing a Thanksgiving turkey giveaway over at Oldsmar Cares. And for some reason, I remember there was me, Linda, and somebody else was there. We, we just put tur- turkeys in people's cars, but it was that community thing that we were all there. You know, I don't think.
Every year.
Yeah, I know. But I mean, like this year, I didn't even know when it was. I didn't, I, I wasn't even aware. But I'm just saying, maybe that would be a nice event we could all do together. I'm just saying. You guys have kids. I don't like, he's, I don't have kids. So I know you guys are busy. Believe me, I know that. And I'm glad they're gone, but you guys are busy. You know, you got your kids to take care of. But I mean, I like the idea of doing community events. I don't have a problem with it. And you know I'll be there.
I think, I think what it boils down to, it's like, you know, that the working at the different chamber events, uh, one, it is functioning as volunteering, it's opportunity for team building. Uh, but it, it's kind of, um, as it was mentioned in some of prior meetings we've had, our work sessions about tradition and, and community building. It's like, that's just what's been customary, traditional, but that doesn't mean we can't forge a new path to say, what else is, is an opportunity? Is it, you know, as nice as it is to, to attend an event versus be part of the event, as an example, what if instead of sitting at a table at the Oldsmar Cares Gala, we, we help the gala? You know, I mean, there's, there's, there's all kinds of things. It's just, do you want, do you want to be served something, or do you want to do the serving? That's kind of what it boils down to.
Perfect. So I got an idea. Vice Mayor, since this is your idea, would you be in charge of it for us? And you come up with ideas for us and suggestions, and then we can discuss it in our public council comments? You know, we'll just, you know, hey, I got this. What do you guys think of doing this? And you be the leader of that? Would, would that be okay with you, Vice Mayor?
Not a problem at all.
Okay. All right.
Sound good with you, Tom? I know you're looking at us.
Except for volunteering as a council at events where it seems like you're committing sunshine violations.
That, that is the only thing that I would remind you of. Every single time you have these situations, you have to be very careful. Um, and don't put yourself in a position that, first of all, that you do it or it appears that you're doing it, um.
Right.
You know, violating the sunshine law. So.
I think.
You're all pretty good at it. You've been doing this long enough. Jared's new and, but he understands it. So I don't think that's going to be a problem. But the lawyer and me always worries about someone saying, I saw the two of them, and they were talking, and it must have been.
Right.
About something on the agenda. So you're always going to, you're always going to have that.
Be mindful.
Just be mindful.
Of your.
Yeah.
I mean, when we're serving beer, there's usually a concerted effort to have, like, multiple third parties there. So we're never like alone. Um, or like at Oktoberfest, I think they put, like, Andrew and I and, and two chamber members at a different tent than where the mayor was. And so there is a concerted effort to avoid that, but that raises a very excellent point.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
All right. Anything else for the record?